Good evening, and thank you for viewing the March 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. We are holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. I want to start by thanking the community and visitors to Arcata and the county for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19. Remember the three most important things you can do to protect yourself and others in the community are masking up, practicing social distance of six feet or more, and washing your hands regularly. These fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open. Importantly, these measures show support for frontline and essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, there are two ways to do so. Number one, if you join the webinar on a computer or similar device, click the raise hand icon when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. If you did not log into the webinar, you may join the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. Dialing *9 will let the clerk know that you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will hear that, you will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Yes, Committee Member White. I'm sorry, Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner Visage Alcock.
Here.
Commissioner Davies.
Here.
Present, Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
And Chair Tagguy.
Here.
And I'll note for the record that Commissioner Figaro is absent today.
We're getting a little feedback there, perhaps. Okay, can we move on to oral communications? Do we have anything, Director Loya?
Now's the time for folks in attendance. We have about 10 attendees to speak on matters not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, please raise your hand. We do have a couple. Okay. About four.
We have four?
Yep. So, go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Excellent, and I also submitted some written documentation in conjunction with my oral presentation today. I really wanted to bring, again, my name's Rebecca Crowe. I'm a resident here in the city of Arcata. I live approximately 1,700 feet from the proposed Arcata Land Company mega cannabis project and wanted to make sure to bring to the Planning Commission's attention this project. I feel that the project proponents have failed to involve the city of Arcata appropriately, and there's definitely some significant portions of this project that will affect the city, most in particular in relation to the city's Western Green Belt Plan, and there's significant land use conflicts with what they're proposing in comparison with what's in the city's plan. I have concerns about groundwater in the area. The evaluation that was done by the proponent does not incorporate any climate change or sea level rise impacts, does not account for, you know, the changes in land use over time, and, you know, as we know, you know, that area has been part of our community for thousands of years. Just because it was a mill for 50 years doesn't mean that Arcata residents should now have to live with forever noise and issues. So, please, I ask that everyone read the letter, read the information that I attached from the Humboldt County Planning Commission, and please contact the Humboldt County Planning Commission and let them know that Arcata cares about our green belt. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I have grave concerns about the planned 23-acre mega grow by Sun Valley that will sit just outside the city limits and alter the green belt forever. Sun Valley has planned 193 hoop houses on that site, all of which require fans and heat to house a crop unsuited to this environment. Not only does this fly in the face of Arcata's green vision of the future, but it undermines the value of the neighboring homes and limits Arcata's vision for this green belt and possible future growth. It's my understanding that Sun Valley has several separate proposals for additional acreage for similar use, one adjacent to this plot and several out off of Butler Bay Road. It feels like Arcata should consider carefully and weigh in on how they see the future of the city expanding, as we know it will. We are asking for your careful consideration beyond the immediate tax revenue to see how we can look at Arcata's future and how it will, this particular grow will impact this area and its ability to maintain its boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Sean, you're in the meeting?
Hello, Commissioners. This is Sean Armstrong. I'm concerned about the Development Department working with the cannabis grow, the 23-acre cannabis grow, to fund roundabouts in the city, particularly because they've been universally not supported by the neighbors. But I'm thinking about, for instance, the one that's at Alliance and Foster that we understand is proposed to be funded by that cannabis grow, but then also the roundabout that's at Sunset and L.K. Wood. And so I'd like to understand from the Planning Department and the Planning Commission, if you can explain why is the city receiving funds from the cannabis development for roundabouts, and how many are they getting funds for?
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Kim, you're in the meeting?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, my name is Kim Puckett. We live 800 feet downwind of this proposed mega grow. Our home and garden are in full view of the site, as are many others. I would ask of you, is this project in the best interest of the residents of the Arcata Bottom, most of whom are city residents, and the rest of whom are in the city's sphere of influence? This proposed project is only possible due to a loophole in the county's cannabis ordinance. If it was zoned according to the general plan, it would not be allowed. The parcel has not been used for industrial purposes for about 30 years. Its only use for the past three decades has been for agriculture. If not for that long outdated designation, this project would never be allowed. Does this project really fit with Arcata's Western Green Belt Plan? I'd also like to point out that the study that they submitted is rife with errors, errors about biological data, water data, energy data, and so on. The study also wrongly states that few people will be affected. California State Parks data shows that over 900 people live within a half mile of that project, including about 317 so-called sensitive receptors. It's also concerning from an equity lens because the same data shows that over 40% of the residents living within half a mile live in poverty. How is it right to allow this project in the middle of one of the poorest areas of Arcata?
Excuse me?
Mr. DeBree says that we need to save-
Ms. Puckett?
Why should Arcata bear the brunt of the impacts to keep this widely dispersed company afloat? I implore you-
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Your time is running out here.
Thanks.
If you could just finish that sentence and wrap up. Okay, are you there? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any more, David?
We have a couple more.
Okay.
Catherine, you're in the meeting?
Good afternoon. My name's Catherine Millian. I too live within a very close proximity to the Sun Valley grow, and our entire community is heavily opposed to this, as is all the adjacent communities. We have been around petitioning and talking to people face to face, as well as via communication, emails and whatnot, and it is very clear that the, a huge portion of the majority of everybody in Arcata, the entirety of Arcata is opposed to it, from growers to the locals to the activists, to the dispensaries. Everybody we have spoken with is opposed to this. They're concerned with the energy use, which would be approximately, I believe, 1% of the entire use of Humboldt would be, need to be allocated to there. The water use is going to be phenomenal. They heavily underestimated their water use. That has been, if you look at any grows estimate, is clearly understated. The runoff and whatnot, even though there's claiming to be able to mitigate it, their practices in the past have not shown any kind of responsible activity. We, as a community, are imploring the city of Arcata to be on our side and to work on our behalf. We are your taxpayers. We are the ones that care about this city. We are the ones that want the best for this city, and it is important to us to keep the community values and the city values that we have worked so hard as a community as a whole to continue. And I just hope to God you guys really back us up and carry out on this for us. We're really counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Can we have one more? You're labeled as call-in user one. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm just confirming that you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Jim Cotton. I live in the Bottoms, very close to the projected site. I'd like to address just a couple of issues here. First of all, thank you for your community service. I appreciate everything you do. I'd like to speak to energy just really briefly here. According to RSC Energy Authority, the two-year average for the county for the daily use is 80 megawatts. They're proposing 1.9 megawatts, which is 2.4% of the county's daily usage. That's huge, and that's only their grow lights. It does not include the fans, the humidifiers, the intake-outtake fans, the equipment for dispersal equipment for their spraying, and it doesn't also include the lights for the surrounding security lights, nor the administrative office or other buildings. And more importantly, there are three boilers, which are gas-fired natural gas, which we all know has more of a carbon footprint than electricity. They're rated at 3 million BTUs an hour if you include all of them. So that's, that's a huge impact. To say nothing of the five tons of plastic per year that this project is projected to use and dispose of. Water is another really important issue. They're estimating 17 million gallons a year. Could be underestimated by 80% according to some of the experts I've called in from Southern California. And my question is, how will this much water use impact the surrounding wells? We personally supply the water to deep-seated farms. There are other farmers, ranchers, households who depend on this aquifer, and there's been no studies done as to what the impact is going to be. When Simpson Timber cleaned up that site, they pumped over 2 million gallons and experienced what they call a saltwater intrusion. And we know from data that saltwater intrusion has the effect on pasture land to convert it and can shift the entire ecosystem. So that's an important area to consider. These issues were not addressed in the initial study done by the county. They're calling for a mitigated negative deck instead of an environmental impact report. At the very least, it should have an environmental impact report, so this-
Mr. Cotton?
Yes?
Your time is up.
Well, thank you very much. I would request that you send a letter to both the county planning department and the Commissioners denying this permit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Any more, David?
That's all.
Okay, so we'll close oral communications and move on to our consent calendar. The only item on our consent calendar this evening is, are the minutes from our March 9th, 2021 meeting. If we don't have any corrections, do we have a move to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Commissioner Visage Alcock?
Aye.
Commissioner Davies?
Did you get that one?
I think we're getting close. Commissioner Davies? He's signaling aye. Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair Tagguy?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and next is public hearings, of which we have none, so we'll move straight into our single business item of the evening, which is to receive a presentation on the Humboldt Local Area Formation Commission procedures. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This item is before you because at the last Planning Commission meeting, you had requested some information on the process and procedures associated with the annexation of areas around the city of Arcata when they do annexations. And so I'll be presenting tonight on the Local Area Formation Commission's procedures. I may call them LAFCO just for everyone's edification. And what I've done is I've included both the government code, which is Attachment B, that regulates the actions of the LAFCO for annexations, as well as the Humboldt LAFCOs. Each region has its own Local Area Formation Commission, so Humboldt has its own LAFCO, which is regulated by that body of government code. They've adopted their own policies and procedures, and for the most part, they're just a one-for-one correlation. The LAFCO procedures in Attachment A are really just a little bit easier to read and organized differently than the government code. And so this is a discussion item to answer questions and educate the Commission about the process that LAFCO goes through, some of the differences between their process and our process, and to hopefully address some of the concerns that were raised when we were discussing the progress on our general plan APR that came up at the last meeting. There's no action to be taken on this item, but I do want to bring this information forward and answer any questions that I can. So I guess just to start, you know, it's important to understand that the LAFCO is an independent agency. They're a separate entity that is initiated, formed, and regulated by the government code sections provided, and they really have an independent decision-making authority. The LAFCO Commission is, is based on, you know, various elected and otherwise appointed officials from around the county. They reflect a cross-section of community services districts, cities, the county, and at-large members. And so they're really a, you know, a broad cross-section of Commissioners, and they are charged primarily with the regulation of boundaries between different jurisdictions, conducting municipal service reviews. That's intended to address municipal services within these various districts, including, you know, water, wastewater, and other services, and to evaluate such boundaries as spheres of influence, urban services boundaries, along with the more hard boundaries between jurisdictions. I do want to point out to the Commission that, you know, with its charge, you know, in regulating annexations, the area that I'll focus on most with this presentation, that the Commission has a body of policy that is distinct from the cities. If you look into their policies, it's on packet page, sorry, packet page 17, under the staff report and recommendation, you know, is the beginning of the items that the Commission are to look at when reviewing and approving annexations. And then again on packet page 23, under standards of evaluation, section 3.5 defines the proposal boundaries and the policies that are used to address decisions on whether, how they set boundaries. And so, for example, they, number one, they ensure that every determination made by the Commission is consistent with the sphere of influence of the local agencies affected by that determination. They require that proposals for a change of organization and reorganization are consistent with formation of orderly and logical boundaries, goes on and on. At issue under our last Commission meeting was really, I think, some confusion around different roles of LAFCO in the city and the policy language that they're looking at when they are identifying their decision-making process versus what the city looks to when it's making its decisions. You know, and importantly, the city's general plan is the body of policy when we form conclusions about, you know, decisions, whether they be permits that we're issuing, or what, you know, our sphere of influence or annexed area might look like. And we have a lot of policies that are outside and beyond the government code and the LAFCO's policy that we reflect on, which was part of the reason why we made the decision to propose and apply for the annexation area that we did with the Creek Side Annexation. But not unlike any other permitting agency, not unlike the Planning Commission itself, when, when a person, an entity, or a body comes before another body for approval of a discretionary project, that discretionary project is decided, you know, by that body with certain conditions sometimes. And so in the staff report, I provided several examples of how this happens. Anytime we're going to the Coastal Commission, for example, for a project review, they have decision-making authority that is separate from ours. We may have approved a coastal development permit, but if it's reviewable or appealable by the Coastal Commission, they have another body of policy that they're looking at to make their decisions. Similarly, the local coastal program, it's a significant body of, you know, both policy and regulation that the city will be adopting, and we've seen it before where, you know, the city has come to a conclusion about the regulations it wishes to incorporate to regulate development within the coastal zone, and the Coastal Commission felt that, you know, they wanted to add conditions or add new, new language or change and modify language. And so when we go before a, another agency, another entity to seek approval for actions that we've taken action on, that's an independent action. And so, you know, some of the concern I think raised last time was, you know, how transparent was our process? How well did we communicate, you know, our intentions to the LAFCO? How well did we communicate our intentions to the public? So on and so forth. You know, how did, how did the decision get made that the annexation area should be larger? You know, and these kinds of questions. And so when we submitted our application to the LAFCO Commission, it was based on the resolution that the Planning Commission had recommended to the council with regard to annexing the project and the Enos Park parcels. The city council made the exact same, you know, assessment. They went through all of the same body of public documentation, the environmental analysis, the, you know, the policy recommendations, and they came to the same conclusion that the Planning Commission came to. All of those hearings were noticed. In fact, we had, you know, some of those hearings that didn't have to be noticed, noticed, and we had some hearings that, you know, through, you know, public members' concern about our noticing procedure, we continued to expand our noticing, even though we had already noticed beyond the required boundaries for that project. We continued to expand it. And so our process was transparent. It was held in public. The decisions were made at Planning Commission and City Council meetings, and the culmination of that was an application to LAFCO to ask for exactly what the Planning Commission and the City Council had requested. When LAFCO received that application, they went through their own independent analysis. They went through their own independent noticing procedures, and in fact, as the LAFCO staff presented at the LAFCO hearing, they actually went above and beyond their noticing requirements for this particular case because their recommendation, one of their recommendations, was to consider annexing additional lands that weren't in the original application. LAFCO has a policy that if you have a 100% owner consent to an annexation, there's no notice of the hearing, there's no reconsideration allowed. The annexation application had 100% owner consent. The two entities, the city of Arcata and Danko, both filed their consent to the annexation. And so even though they were proposing to annex additional lands as one of the alternatives recommendations, they weren't required to notify anyone. Now clearly they're, you know, I think in retrospect, you know, they, they maybe could have done a better job of noticing. I think that's true of all endeavors, is that in reflection, we can change things and make them better. But at the end of the day, they went ahead and noticed, even though they weren't required to, understanding the implications of annexing these additional areas. When they held their hearing, we had, you know, a couple, they had a couple of people show up and, you know, comment on the items, so they clearly knew about the annexation at the time, and the LAFCO made its decision, its own independent decision. So the, I think the crossover, there was some confusion as to the crossover between the decisions that the city makes and the LAFCO Commission makes, and the arguments ultimately that the LAFCO Commission made when they, independently from the city, decided to annex those additional areas, were based on the fact that the parcels that were left behind inside the annexation areas were substantially surrounded by the city of Arcata. That's specified in government code, that unless there's a strong reason not to annex land that would be substantially surrounded by, by a jurisdiction that's doing an annexation, that they should annex those additional lands to make the boundaries regular. And so that was one motivating reason. The other motivating reason they cited was that there's a, an assessment district for the James Creek that has lands both within and outside of the city. By annexing those additional lands, that assessment district could be dissolved because all of the lands would be inside the city of Arcata. And then the third reason that the LAFCO Commission independently recommended annexing these additional lands was because of their ag preservation policies. One of LAFCO's underlying charges is to preserve ag and open space lands, and the LAFCO Commission reasoned in its initial decision that the city would protect those ag lands and ag resources better than the county would. And that was the initial discussion. So those are the three reasons that were articulated by the Commission for their decision. Clearly, the city of Arcata as an applicant, you know, was coming to the Commission not with the, you know, authority or, you know, otherwise means to advise the LAFCO Commission, but as an applicant. And so I represented the city's interests in that first meeting, and I clearly indicated the body of policy that the Planning Commission, the city council, had taken into consideration when they made their decision not to annex those additional lands, recognizing that in the scoping and even dating back to the 2006 application when the annexation request was first made, that the county and LAFCO had suggested we expand our annexation area to include those lands, that we consistently said, no, we're not going to annex those lands. It's not consistent with our general plan. We don't feel it's the best use of our resources, and so on and so forth. So the, you know, I- You know, I, I just wanted to point out that we, you know, we represented ourselves. And the decisions that were made, I think fairly well to the commission. But going as an applicant before that body were willing to accept their decision. As the independent agency that they are, but they're recognizing that they have a different set of policy that they're interested in. Instructed to, to implement. So I'm not exactly sure what all questions there may be beyond just the transparency of the process, which to my estimation was. Very transparent. Several people commented on the, the project ahead of LAFCO's decision-making. And were, were notified. Of that fact beforehand, even though they weren't required to. There were concerns about the city's policy and how it jibes with the LAFCO's body of policy. And I think I've addressed the main concerns around that. But if there are other questions or concerns about the process. For, you know, being annexations and requests and why they ultimately are, you know, under their. You know, deliberative process allowed to make changes to our, you know, our request. Be happy to answer them if I can.
Okay, Commission. Let's, this is an opportunity to ask questions on the staff report and your packet of information from the city.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate having all of these materials in one place. The LAFCO. Rules from Humboldt County as well as the state legislation and your presentation. Right now. I, I, I guess rather than. Rehashing what happened on the last LAFCO decision. And. Later on, their reconsideration of that decision and going with the city's original proposal. I, I'd like to look ahead. And. Hopefully discuss. Now and going forward as we. Amend the general plan. What Arcata can do so that we are not. Going to be surprised in the future by a LAFCO decision that. You know, we, we can anticipate. And so that there's a means set up in our general plan or in planning. Commission and City Council procedures. That would. At the very least. Include. A likely LAFCO. Policy decision as one of the major alternatives that we analyze and consider and debate at the city level. And I, I think there are probably some means of doing that. That would. Bring the city's discussion to a point where we can look at the contingency that LAFCO. Is gonna follow their own policies. And decide something or recommend something that's very different than what the city of Arcata, City Council or Planning Commission. Recommends according to our policies. And, and then possibly to figure out in advance. Where those areas of difference are going to be so that Arcata has policies. In place to address them preemptively. I think we can do that. In amending the city of Arcata's general plans, annexation policies. In our growth control program. It might take a bunch of other things to happen too. But at some point, I think we should discuss them here in the Planning Commission. And it would be great if the City Council would also take that topic up. Another thing that I wanted to raise. Having heard all of the neighbors. Comments about the Arcata Land Company. Proposal. Outside the boundaries of the city of Arcata. Would be, you know, possibilities, not, not. Not just that. Somehow that proposal would trigger another potential annexation. Decision by LAFCO, but that there would be utility extensions and service extensions. That would either be imposed on the city. Or that LAFCO would then make very clear statements about. With regard to. You know, how that could affect. The city of Arcata, our service areas. Our sphere of influence and, you know, anything else that comes under LAFCO's jurisdiction. So. Basically, I, I think there are ways that we can. Address these types of issues and, and actually prevent. The, the, the really difficult situation that we encountered at our last meeting and. That was taken forward in the subsequent LAFCO reconsideration hearing. Thank you.
Jump in, anybody?
I'm not sure if there was a question in there, but I, I'd have comments if the commission wants to hear them, but Commissioner Barstow.
Yeah. I found the. The LAFCO policy. Document. Very clear and easy to read and understand. So I think we should at least compliment them on that. But. Kind of in view of what Judith was saying. If we were going to look at. Amending our annexation procedures and so on. It would, it would seem like. The first thing we would need to do is try to anticipate. What LAFCO might possibly. Say in, in their decision. And decide whether that's okay with us. One possibility for, for. Avoiding. A surprise like that. Would be to include in our, in our recommendation to the City Council. A kind of a poison pill provision that would say. If we can't do this the way we want to, we're not going to do it. So. You know, that, that. May or may not be appropriate, it may or may not achieve a desired result, but at least. It would. Make it very clear. To everyone what, what our position is. Also, reading over the, the LAFCO policies. What I gathered, if you want to appeal their decision, you're actually going back to the same people that made the decision. Which doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but. My question, I guess, for, for David, if, if, if you know. Is what do you do if you have a decision that, that you really, really don't like and. Maybe you feel does not. Fully comply with LAFCO's own. Policies and, and decision standards. Is there a, another body to appeal to?
There, so. Yeah, I don't know if it formally would be considered an appeal. The process that they have available to them, it's, it's called a reconsideration. You're absolutely correct. It's reconsidered by the exact same body. That made the original decision. And there's actual, actually threshold criteria. They take up a reconsideration only if there's new or substantially different information presented. And so again, that's, that's a discretionary decision that the, the body itself makes. My understanding of the way that the process works is that. If a reconsideration application is made. The staff don't decide whether or not there's new or, or substantially different information. And before they decide to move the reconsideration hearing forward, they schedule the reconsideration hearing. Present the information to the LAFCO Commission. With the recommendation and then the commission themselves makes the determination whether or not there's new or substantially different information presented. Once they've crossed that threshold, they're now essentially evaluating the impact of their decision based on that new information. So it's not a traditional appeal in, in the way that, you know, the zoning administrator's decision can be appealed to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission decisions can be appealed to the City Council. The. LAFCO is similar to the council in that there is no appeal authority. For most decisions. And so anyone who's agreed. After, you know, making a reconsideration. Has the courts to, to resolve those concerns. There's no appeal per se. And to, to the point about the. You know, some, some measures or policies or methods for. You know, evaluating potential LAFCO, you know, decisions. You know, this was not a major focus. This expanded annexation area was not a major focus in your hearings, especially in the recent twenty nineteen hearings. You know, under your consideration. But it was discussed multiple times and we did bring this up to the, the Planning Commission. And essentially, the, the idea was rejected. When, when Danko came forward with their annexation request of the project parcel in two thousand four-ish. The county made almost verbatim the exact same letter that, you know, hey, we'd like you to annex larger areas. You can take all of Foster. We're coming to a road management agreement with us. The LAFCO, I don't know if they responded. I don't have that information at the top or at the tip of my fingertips. Right now, but I don't know if they responded to that original annexation in the same way, but I do know that with this new application, the county presented the exact same argument. Please take all of, you know, Foster Avenue. And LAFCO weighed in and said, we're, we're, we'd like you to consider taking additional area because you'll be substantially surrounding these parcels. And that was raised in both referral comments and in the EIR scoping hearing. And that information was presented to the Planning Commission and City Council. It did not make it so far as to being a formal. Alternative under consideration in the EIR. Because it was rejected out of hand. I do think that, you know, making the decision to consider it as an alternative in the EIR would certainly have addressed Vice Mayor's. Vice Chair Mayor's concern. You know, that we could have had a more robust and open dialogue. At that time on that. But. The. I guess the challenge with. You know, with, with including it in an EIR in terms of, you know, an alternative is that really any of those alternatives. Is basically fair game. And we felt like it was so far outside the. You know, the policy guidance that we receive in our general plan. That, you know, really the, the only throwaway option we had was the no project alternative that didn't meet any of the, the product objectives. Certainly, we could have added it in there and that, you know, as a matter of administrative policy can, can be something that we do. In the future that if there's a, you know, a review authority and we're conducting an EIR. That you include that other body's recommendation as an alternative. But there are just certain decisions that, you know, we made to. You know, streamline our environmental review and make sure that we were reviewing legitimate. Alternatives.
David, I'll jump in. In the pre-application process that's recommended by LAFCO. I don't suppose they go to the point of. Laying out alternate. Boundaries, but somewhere along this process. I understand there is a little back and forth about. Suggested boundaries by them and how the city feels and or rejects that idea. I think you just described that to some extent, and I know that this process occurred over. Several years. And so if we weren't at all those meetings or don't have that kind of memory, we wouldn't necessarily have caught that, but. It sure feels like, and I think this touches on what the commission is reflecting, it would be awfully nice to have a sense of what the possible boundaries. Could be. When we pulled the trigger on saying, go ahead and annex. I don't think any of us had a clue that. Or, or remembered from previous meetings that the boundary could jump as far as it did. And certainly that created some surprise in the neighborhood. Is there something that you can imagine? That could, you know, stir up those alternate. Boundary discussions that LAFCO may be pondering. At that last moment before we actually pull the trigger on a annexation. I'm, I think that next.
Yeah, and again, I mean this.
Go ahead.
In this particular instance, you know, this was not a last minute decision. This is something that even in. I don't have the exact dates, but I, I want to say it was in twenty, early twenty sixteen is when we did the scoping for the EIR. LAFCO was there, County Public Works were there. And they had. Said at the pre-application meeting, we'd like you to annex these additional areas. And that was incorporated into the scoping notes that's in the EIR. You know, albeit that's a, you know, several hundred page document. And so it's, it's certainly, I'm not going to say that it was highlighted in the forefront that, you know. Everyone should have read that EIR and been fully aware. But. You know, I, I can envision a process where, you know, we certainly highlight that because, you know, staff did. Have a full understanding that LAFCO and the county. You know, felt like there were additional areas we should annex. There's actually email or I'm sorry, letters in the record dating back to Larry Otter. To LAFCO staff saying, you know, when they made the recommendation to annex these additional lands. That we don't as a policy matter. Ask to annex areas that don't have landowner consent. That's just not the, the city's process for annexation. We, we. Work with willing landowners that, you know, comport with the, the policy that the city has already adopted to evaluate. You know, those annexation requests or if they are, you know, held in safety as a result of, you know, failed, you know, water or sewer. Then we work with those landowners as well. But by and large, we don't annex people who don't want to be annexed. And I say this with, you know, with one caveat that. There are certain times when, you know, it may make sense to have additional lands annexed. The Siberia annexation was a good example where. We had two failed septics. That were known. In, in the area when we did the annexation. And there were other septic systems on that same annexation that we knew were likely to fail soon. And so really it was an economy of scale that the, the neighbors garnered. By having that additional annexation. And I can't say that a hundred percent of those neighbors wanted to be annexed at the time. But I can tell you is that a hundred percent of those neighbors would want cities sewer when their septic failed. And so, you know, there may be times, I don't want to, you know, make it so categorical, there may, there may be times when. You know, for, you know, appropriate planning purposes or for health and safety reasons, the city would. Take up a, a larger annexation. But, you know, in this particular instance, it, it wouldn't have made sense. There were no, you know, driving policies. That. You know, recommended or health and safety issues that would have recommended that we, that we annex these lands. And so, you know, the, the history on that again, dates back to two thousand and six. We knew that the county. Since two thousand and six wanted us to annex those lands. And we knew, you know, early in this process on the current application that the county wanted us to annex the lands and so did LAFCO. So, you know, I mean. We will certainly, you know. we will certainly, you know, I don't, it's not like we do annexations very often, but we will certainly make a point to describe to the Commission in the future. You know, whether it's embedded in policy and changes to the general plan or just as a matter of practice that, you know, we evaluate and bring forward, you know, alternatives that were recommended by these, you know, outside entities and highlight them more. I certainly don't want anyone to get the impression that we did not discuss this, but it certainly wasn't a focus.
Well, thank you. Are there other Commission questions or comments? Judy, Judith?
Hi. Yeah, thank you very much for noting that. I'm kind of wondering, you know, if perhaps breaking open the scoping process for for any of the sequoia analyses. And doing that in a more open and transparent manner would bring some of these issues out in the open sooner as well. You know, this is something where, yeah, it's in the record, but the fact that the city basically rejected out of hand, including that possible LAFCO policies insistence in the list of alternatives that got as far as, you know, the Planning Commission's consideration. The fact that that was thrown out as unlikely before it even hit the Planning Commission's purview. I wonder if part of what might remedy this sort of thing in the future would be to bring that scoping process to the Planning Commission and open it up to the public earlier. This is, this is the second project, I think, where a fairly closed scoping process did not alert the Planning Commission to what the possibilities might have been. And that later caused some, some problems. So I wonder if that's also a practice that we could do without changing anyone's rules, without amending any legal document, but simply bringing into our usual practices. I don't know what.
You muted. Vice Chair.
I said, I don't know what folks think about that, but David, I don't know if that's something that is worth thinking about. It doesn't require making any upfront decision now, but certainly the next time we have a substantial sequoia process before us to possibly bring the Planning Commission into the scoping process rather than waiting until we have a completed initial study, that might help.
Yeah. I think, you know, off the cuff, I think there are some, you know, both administrative efficiencies that are a concern there, but as well as that, there are probably some considerations that we'd have to take with regard to, you know, the Planning Commission's developing bias. But it's certainly something we can consider. I think for most projects, you know, the scoping, you know, there are times when we have, you know, scoping can be pretty broad. There are times when we have scoping that includes the public. There are times when, you know, scoping is limited to agencies that are going to make referrals. And, you know, I think to the extent that the Planning Commission gets involved early on, there are some challenges. We've had times when, you know, pre-application, for example, we have a pre-application process where, you know, an applicant has come to a body like the Planning Commission, sought a pre-application, you know, walked away, understanding a certain direction based on the comments that came out of that pre-application, which is essentially what a scoping would be. Only to find that when they came back, you know, there was a completely different perspective when they were, you know, looking at might of the, you know, the public comment that was coming in, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's, you know, but we can certainly look into that. You know, I do want to point out too that, you know, to Dan's point, I mean, I feel like we did address this early on, and it wasn't just at the staff level that it was, you know, rejected. And that, you know, at any time, the, you know, the Planning Commission can make a recommendation to expand the scope of a, an environmental document. You know, based either on, you know, information that's coming in from, you know, the public or based on, you know, their professional assessment of, you know, the evaluation. It's a little challenging to lump all environmental work into the same bucket because really the EIR is the primary way to evaluate alternatives. So those are some things that I think we'd have to take into consideration when trying to develop a scoping plan that involved the Planning Commission. We can certainly do some additional thinking.
Anybody else? Well, it seems assured that next time an annexation comes up, we'll all be asking a lot of questions about what possible boundaries might get expanded out in our request. I think about Shirley Boulevard or I think down behind Hsu when there was a gift of some land or a trade of some land. There's been a few small annexations and this big one. And until now, it always seemed like it happened exactly the way we saw the maps in our packets. So in the future, I imagine a lot more questions about what, how this could expand. What are we not seeing here? Are we ready to wrap on this? Are there any other comments before we, we're going to take public comment here on this item. So, and David, do you have people in queue?
There are a couple of people in queue and I wanted to just remind the public, there was a little bit of confusion on on the last round. I will set the timer for a minute and 30 seconds when the alarm goes off. That's your cue that there are 30 more seconds for speaking, just to make sure everybody gets their full amount of time. And I'll indicate to you, Chair, when the time's up, if you can't hear the the alarms.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to public comment.
Okay. Karen, you're in the meeting.
Okay. Hey, I wish to express huge thanks to you for your comments during the last meeting. I was able to quote you, four of you, in our reconsideration request to LAFCO members, and I believe it helped a lot. It cost a thousand dollars, but we won. I listened to the meeting from minute 52 to the end several times. And Dr. Mayor's comments were especially insightful. We have high hopes that tonight's meeting will result in a new way of handling planning where the staff actually listen to the experts like Dr. Mayor and the citizens. Over years of packed meetings, none of our suggestions were incorporated in the Creekside Plan. I begged for a rendering of the bridge where the road would go. I met with Netra twice to talk of alternatives to a roundabout, but he acted as if his hands were tied, tied to the plan they devised. We asked that Danko-owned Westwood Wood Gardens allowed Creekside traffic on the road the city owns and currently pays electric bills for lighting. We asked if some traffic would Creekside go up Stewart, but we told that would require a new EIR. Yet they annexed it for a park that may have heavy traffic with no new EIR. Because traffic would flow without a stop sign. From the freeway to Sun Valley, I begged for a stop sign at least, but the plan sign is not on Foster. It said the Creekside entrance. And then Foster traffic was used as a reason for both annexation and the roundabout. Danko will pay for the roundabout, so is that okay? Last week, I heard in the presentation that the gigantic Sun Valley weed grow will also pay for the same roundabout based on their increased foster traffic. Follow the cars to that money and the same owners. This wasn't an accidental annexation. It was planned by a few people who kept it quiet. I believe they were afraid to alert the neighbors of this annexation. So the city told no one relevant, like Danko, until Monday for the meeting.
Thank you, Karen.
Oh, you're welcome. I love you guys for trying. Thanks very much. Don't be
Okay. Sean, you're in the meeting.
Hi, I'm Sean Armstrong. With a FOIA request, we've been able to piece together how and why the Planning Commission, City Council, City Manager, the applicant Danko were all unaware of the proposed annexation from April through November. Even though every public meeting starts with an open-ended staff communications where staff should have shared what they knew, what they were planning with LAFCO, because the city held back its actual application until November, until LAFCO is complete with their addendum. There's a collaboration there and a secrecy the whole time. LAFCO, in email coordination, deliberately alluded the required steps, section 56652 of petitioning landowners for annexation. Hence, the owner's complete unawareness of it as well. I just want to confirm what David Loy said at the last Planning Commission meeting, which said the 75 acre annexation was not a glitch or a mistake. It was planned. They are planners. City staff planned this. In 2006, that letter did not say from Public Works that they were supposed to annex us. That was a misstatement that David Lloyd made tonight. I have the letter. There's no statement about annexing us. That shows up in 2016, which was new information, which was not provided in any of the public documents. That's a link to the LAFCO letter. It's not in anything on your website. It's not in any of the thousands of pages. For some reason, it didn't make it even into your public comments, even though it was a public comment on the EIR as is being circulated. That's weird. So if the community can't trust the sequoia process approved by Planning Commissioners or even by the City Council, how are community members supposed to approve this new general plan? This particularly one based on equity? If our elected officials don't count, let alone Arcata's people of color. You know, LAFCO announced the plan to annex the 75 acres at a 2015 scoping meeting and Otter said that it would not be appropriate. That was never brought forth, nor was Bob Bronckel's 2016 letter the first time it was mentioned. Yet in 2020, the 75 acre annexation was immediately acted upon when it arrived at Plan Western LAFCO in February and the EIR addendum was ready by April and never communicated to you. Is that how this city works? Is that okay? Is the conclusion of this meeting, is that how it works? Because I didn't hear anyone say that that was inappropriate. It's profound to me that it was done deliberately and secretly. On 21st, Marc Andre reads that addendum and he objects, and that also is left out of the official record. He says, what are we doing here? Colette says that's part of administrative record. It didn't go into the addendum because it wasn't. It's just staff communication, you know.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'm wondering what's happening at the city. Is this?
Okay, Lisa, you can unmute yourself and you're in.
Hello, Lisa Brown from Arcata. First off, I want to make a point that this entire thing that happened never should have happened. How awful to put the landowners of the properties and the modified boundary through this incredibly aggressive process in the middle of a pandemic when all of us are already strained, vulnerable and powerless. One of the property owners actually had to endure this in the middle of escrow. I think that those who were responsible for this action frankly should be embarrassed, and I suspect that some are. I have to wonder, since the largest ag property involved in the expanded boundary south of Foster was for sale at the time, since it was for sale at the time the modified boundary was imagined, that there may have been designs to attempt to develop it with services from the city following annexation. It was always the previous property owner's dream to develop. We are so fortunate that the property has new owners who value the prime agricultural land and wish to enhance it, not develop it. What we should take away from this experience is an absolute commitment on the part of the city to work hard to not only maintain our current general plan policies regarding ag land, but to strengthen them during the general plan update. While I didn't feel that a strong enough case was made by the city regarding how inconsistent this action was with our general plan policies, specifically how we have language in our general plan and land use code that explicitly prohibits the annexation of prime agricultural properties outside of our urban services boundary, our protections prevailed in the end. Our focus going forward should be to provide bomb-proof protections for prime agricultural lands in the city and those surrounding our city, not only to the west, but to the north, south and east. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Rebecca, you're in the meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on a couple of things that I heard, and I really appreciate the Commissioner's time this evening to look back and evaluate and understand the implications of LAFCO. I think this is both, you know, inside and outside the city issue. And that in terms of coordination, more work could be done in coordinating with the county, especially as it relates to that area in between the city limits and the sphere of influence. Obviously, in particular, I'm talking about the Arcata Land Company project. I think there's potential issues there in the future with coordination in terms of LAFCO, the city's boundary. I also heard Commissioners Mayor and Barstow mention potential issues with service extensions. And it should be noted that throughout the Humboldt County's IS MND for the Arcata Land Company project, they mentioned numerous times the potential connection to the city of Arcata's water system. While technically, I think they're quoting the wrong water line, it seems to me that some coordination should have happened and that if you're talking about those larger coordination issues, again, it's sort of back and forth. And also just really appreciate Commissioner Mayor's notations of improving the scoping process. I do live not too far from the Creekside project and aren't fully aware of all the issues and, and, you know, some of the things that have gone on. But, you know, in terms of me personally being noticed, I was noticed multiple times on that project. I live about as far from that Creekside project as I do the Arcata Land Commission project, so kudos to at least doing better notification than the county has done on their project. So would encourage the Planning Commission to look at both how does LAFCO influence your near-term decisions, but how does those areas within the county and how do you control land use to ensure the future vision of your city right at those boundaries? And, yeah, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Michelle, you're in the meeting.
Hello, my name is Shale Petkraus. I'm the farmer and owner of Tulley Fog Farm. LAFCO's Code of Action for Annexation dictates that both farmers and landowners be noticed and consulted prior to actions of annexation. I'm a farmer and an owner of land that was annexed in January. I was not consulted. And I was barely noticed. The noticing was severely lacking. It had an unintelligible map. We couldn't tell that our land was included. And it contained no names or addresses. At best, the noticing was inconsiderate, rude and unhelpful. However, in reality, it simply appeared to be purposefully misleading. On January 15th, the EIR addendum, in the EIR addendum, Colette stated, I haven't heard from Sean about the modified boundary. And D-Lo Freitas, who works under David Loy, responded, we have his email, but please hold off. We want to play it safe. An annexation, an analyzation of development in the city of Arcata over the last 20 years shows that 80 acres of farmland have been developed. Arcata has no more vacant city land for development. And this hush-hush annexation was clearly a land grab with the hope of future development. Maybe not in the next few years, but definitely in the next couple of generations. The Planning Commission and LAFCO came out of this process appearing to be untrustworthy and uninterested in the and uninterested in the needs of local farmers. The whole process felt shady. I would like to see better noticing, an actual consultation with farmers and landowners and better public relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayle.
That appears to be all the public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We'll close by the comment.
If the commission would indulge me on just one point.
Please.
I do, I do believe that, you know, the public is entitled to, you know, certainly raise any concerns or come to any conclusions that they wish to come to. But I, you know, want to speak on behalf of staff because I believe a lot of the comments that were made over the course of the last couple of weeks in, in this meeting tonight were taken out of context. Specifically, Senior Planner Freitas advised that she needed to check with me before sending someone's private email address because it's not city policy to share personal information of residents of the county or the city. It had nothing to do with a grand conspiracy. She's new employee to the city and she wanted to make sure that she did her due diligence to ensure that she acted appropriately in the public's interest. And I commend her for ensuring that she's taking actions that are appropriate to preserve that public trust.
Okay, thank you. Commission, do we have any last comments or thoughts on this before we move on? Shoot it, please.
I'd just like to thank you for taking the time to talk about these issues today and going onward. I, I, I realize that it probably wasn't part of the, the, the big picture before, but I think it, it's good that it will be in the future, and I, I think that this has been a very productive use of our time, so thank you very much.
Anybody else? Well, I feel much more informed about Laughco and after reading the materials and then looking at how they adjusted the boundaries to the annexation, I get their reasoning. The other thing I would like to just touch on is in terms of future development, there is a land conservation restriction on at least one of these parcels. Is that correct, Director Loy?
That is correct. The parcel west of the project parcel is in concert, well, will be in a conservation easement in perpetuity.
Okay. And the parcel to the west of that, which is now part of the city of Arcata or will be when this is all finalized, is that, am I saying this correctly?
No, in fact, the, the Laughco commission took its reconsideration last week and they reversed their decision and went back to the original city proposal to have the project parcel, the Dan Co. parcel annexed and Ennis Park annexed. And so no additional lands beyond those two parcels are included in the city going forward.
Okay, so in terms of farmland protection, it appears as though we're in about as good a place as we can be with that land conservation easement in place. You know, I, I don't know what more we could hope for in that respect, whether it's part of the city of Arcata or the part of the county, and it is a bit of a comment, compliment to the city and our general plan that Laughco felt like the city of Arcata was a better protector of farmland than the county in this situation. So that said, I think we can move on unless anybody has any last comments they want to make. Okay. We will close that business item, and the last thing on our agenda tonight is correspondence and communications.
I do have one correspondence. At the last planning commission meeting, there were questions raised about the Arcata Land Company's cannabis permit that was before the, the county planning commission. And there were some questions as to whether or not the project was going to be connected to sewer, whether it was going to be connected to water and what those impacts were. I believe there was a question about dark sky as well, and so I confirmed that there is no plan for the project to connect to sewer or water services from the camp, from the city. And pursuant to the discussion that happened tonight, Laughco cannot force the city to provide those services. In fact, it's kind of the other way around. The Laughco won't allow services unless there's an annexation proposal. And cities' policies for annexation wouldn't allow for connection there. It would need to be based on health and safety, why we would allow an emergency connection. And so I haven't done an in-depth analysis to see if there are other areas of the general plan with my gut reaction and my, my fast analysis that I did this afternoon suggests that we wouldn't allow for that analysis or that annexation anyway. I mean, in terms of the, the dark sky compliance, because it is a mixed light project, the elements, the greenhouses or hoop houses that have the mixed light components do have shades that are, according to the, yeah, the initial study prepared by the county intended to block the light during the nighttime, and all the other lighting is dark sky compliant. According to the information that they've provided. I don't know if there were other questions about that particular project, but that's, I did promise to bring that back, and so that's, that's what I know on the project.
Uh, thank you, and I assume that everybody received the email, including the, the, what was that, the EIR on, or the county public, uh, planning commission response, right, is? So if that brought up any questions to anybody or any questions to David on this, now's your time. Shoot it.
And I'll note that this isn't like a, a time for deliberations, but I'd be happy to answer any quick questions you might have.
Okay, thanks very much. I admit I haven't read all of those Arcata Land Company documents because I think I'd be buried in them if I attempted it right now. But I, I know, I know that Laughco also has control over connections to water by contract. And it seems as though if that project is not going to be connected through an extension, which would trigger annexation potentially. But Laughco does have purview over even contracts to supply water. And, and their documents from the project mentioned that their water would be coming from a mix of city water and groundwater. At, at what point, you know, does the city weigh in on both the potential for impacts to groundwater and a very clear position on either contractual or utility extension to the project? Is that something that happens upfront, or is it something that would happen later?
In terms of the city providing water to the site, we would not extend services to, to an area outside of our city limits, outside of our urban services boundary, unless it was an emergency connection. And so if the applicant came in, or if, if the owner came in with an application to annex and extend their urban services boundary so they could, you know, procure those services, we'll go through the full public process, you know, before the planning commission, the city council, et cetera, et cetera. And the city council and planning commission could make the decision whether to, you know, annex those lands and then provide that service or not. It's a little different when you have a residential use, because if they use, lose their, you know, their, their sewer, their septic, or their, you know, their well runs dry or becomes, you know, otherwise undrinkable. You know, then it's a health and safety issue, and the city can, you know, take an emergency annexation and extend services without annexation. There have been in the past times when connections were made outside the city limits and outside the urban services boundary. But those kinds of handshake deals aren't made anymore. And we have, you know, rigorous policy and, and law that prevents us from doing that. So I don't see that as an option. In terms of contract services, I'm unfamiliar and I'd have to research that. But the city was, you know, the city received a referral from the county and provided a letter addressing environmental concerns that they wanted to make sure were addressed in the environmental document. I've now read the environmental document twice and believe they've addressed the concerns. I haven't gone to the level of detail to ensure that, you know, veracity of their claims are backed 100% by the, the special studies that they've, that they have to support those, those claims, but you know, but that, it's, again, this is a, an independent agency that's making their own review and decision. I do think that, you know, the, you know, the city council has been contacted by many of the same people and certainly, you know, came up at the last city council meeting and our city manager, Karen Deemer, provided input on, on where we're at, you know, with respect to having, you know, made our, our recommendation to the, the planning commission, you know, through the, through the county staff. So that typically happens before on a discretionary project. And in this case, you know, it happened even earlier than that, when the community and the city was able to weigh in on the county's policies for where these land uses were, would be allowable. And, you know, I, you know, I understand that, you know, that, you know, people aren't thinking about large-scale grows that may be, you know, in the field across the way when, you know, they're being asked to weigh in on a county policy sometimes. And, you know, I think that's the position we find ourselves in, is that they, they now have a discretionary review on a project, on a parcel, rather where, you know, it's, you know, it's allowable. And so they're going through the process right now to evaluate whether to allow it on that particular parcel or whether there should be conditions. And so I think the, you know, the public's interests are being served by, you know, their, their comment letters, you know, both to, you know, the planning commission, city council and the Humboldt County Planning Commission.
Any other questions for staff on this one? Okay. Any commission communications? Then we will adjourn. Thank you all.